We are going to have the invocation and our invicator is not here today, Louis Jones, so I'll do it. Okay. Creator of everything good, we ask you to bless this council. We ask you to bless the people of Virginia Beach, the Commonwealth and our great nation. Make us safe, make us sound, let unity prevail. Let us all reach out to each other and embrace and get along and really focus on what we have in common, not what we have dividing us. We have important work to do, we have our challenges in front of us. We ask for your guidance and blessing. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clark, roll call.
All present, so you're Councilmember Jones.
Okay.
I want to say why Louis is not here.
Okay. Oh, he is out on business. Now I ask for a motion for certification of the closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Vote is open.
It's open.
There we go.
By a vote of ten to zero, you certify the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, now we're going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the informal informal sessions of January 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
Mr. Tower.
I'm trying to remember whether I was here.
I believe you.
Me too.
I missed one meeting. The, is this a, this was, I always missed a workshop.
This is a formal session.
Yeah, this is a formal.
By a vote of nine to zero with Vice Mayor Wilson, I'm saying you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, and now we're going to open up the public comment on the legislative request to add an amendment of the marriage provision to the Constitution of Virginia requested by Councilmember Berluci.
The first speaker is Melissa Lukson. Lucason, I'm sorry. Melissa Lukason, James Nicholson, and after Mr. Nicholson will be, we'll begin our WebEx speakers.
Okay.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to speak in favor of the legislative request regarding the marriage amendment in the Virginia Constitution, and I would like to simply ask sort of a question. What does the Marshall Newman Amendment currently mean in the Commonwealth of Virginia? Does it stand there only as an oversight as the Commonwealth has moved forward past its old legacies of the past? Has we have removed Confederate statues in 2020, finally repealed segregation laws from the books? Is it simply an oversight which we are just now getting to? Or is it sitting there with a vague hope by some people in the state that Virginia still holds that amendment and that they were only dragged towards constitutionality of same-sex marriage by the forceful hand of the federal government? And I cannot believe that the latter part of that is true and that it's only an oversight which we are just now getting to, which we should get to. Because, as some say, it takes three things to make a trend. First, we have seen in 2020 that we finally overturned segregation laws, which are still, were still in place despite being unconstitutional. We saw just this past year that we have finally begun to remove Confederate statues and the legacy of the Confederacy in the state. And so now it's a trend that we must revisit the Marshall Newman Amendment and request that it be finally taken away from the Virginia Constitution. It is not merely a symbolic measure as well. Even though it cannot be actually enforced due to the Supreme Court and a district court overturning its constitutionality, it still has real effects in the school system. Even though the issuing of marriage licenses cannot be prevented to same-sex couples, when students walk into Virginia and they go into sex education with ceases abstinence until marriage, the constitutional definition of marriage in the Commonwealth of Virginia is marriage between one man and one woman. Regardless of whether the state cannot actually refuse issuing of amendments and licenses to same-sex couples, students are still taught a framework where marriage is between a man and a woman. In the name of fairness, the name of equity, justice, which we've already begun to implement in the state the past few years, we must continue that trend and push for the overturning of the amendment. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great job.
Barbara Massner. I do not see her. We'll go to the WebEx speakers now. The first one is Virginia Jenkot. If you will pause two to three seconds before beginning, you are unmuted.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and council members. My name is Dr. Virginia Jenkot, but most of you know me by Ginger. I currently serve on the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission, but I'm not speaking for the commission tonight. I am addressing you tonight as a private citizen. I have served as vice president on the Board of Directors for Hampton Roads Pride, which is the leading LGBT advocacy organization in the area. Over the last five years, I have invited all of you many times to Pride events, and I've stood alongside you in advocating for the LGBT community. I am so grateful for the support you have given for our community in support of non-discrimination. But what tugs at me right now is this: When a law targets one group of people, it is discrimination. I am so thankful that I am able to stand before a group of elected officials who have taken a vow to represent the people, all people, and to know that you will do your best to encourage the Virginia General Assembly to also support the LGBT community. So in support of marriage equality, I encourage you to include in your legislative packet the amendment of the marriage provision of the Constitution of Virginia. It's the right thing to do for all people. Your support as the leaders of Virginia Beach will resonate loudly in Richmond. I cannot emphasize enough that when a law targets one group of people, it is discrimination. We have come so far together to eliminate discrimination in housing and employment for the LGBT community, and I hope we continue this. I thank you for your service and for representing me and the LGBT community's right to marry who we love. Thank you.
The next speaker is WebEx, Michelle Lauder. If you will pause two to three seconds before beginning, you are unmuted.
Good evening. I want to start off by saying that I've been married to my husband Scott for 33 years. I chose him as my partner because of the love he and I shared for one another. Love comes in all forms. It would be wrong to say that a person cannot marry someone just because they are not from the opposite sex. I read something recently that truly resonated with me. Marriage should be between a spouse and a spouse, not a gender and a gender. Everyone deserves the life they desire and to the person they love. Same-sex marriage should be legal because the Constitution expresses equality. According to the Constitution, individuals have a right to privacy of who they want to spend their lives with. Inhibition of same-sex marriage will only violate these rights and freedom of individuals. In addition, the Constitution does not specify the right to marry as the right to marry someone of the opposite sex. It has nothing to do with sex, gender, or race. It specifies the right for whoever one shares serious desire with regardless of his or her sexuality. This means that both same-sex couples and heterosexuals have the same motivation and desire for marriage with similar goals. Who are we to deny anyone their rights and their ability to fulfill their dreams? Our world is evolving more than ever. People can finally start to become themselves and own their own independence. Just because someone does not love a person from the opposite sex doesn't make them wrong. We can love and should be able to marry any one of our choosing. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Taking the time also.
The next speaker is Junico Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez, if you will pause two to three seconds before beginning, you are unmuted.
I am Junito Rodriguez, and my preferred gender pronouns are he, him, and his. I thank you for this moment to speak on marriage equality. This is a subject that truly hits home for me, not only because I am a resident of Virginia Beach and a member of the LGBTQ community, but because I am a man who has married to another man. Five years ago, I married my partner of eight years, Gary Dion Rodriguez. We married in my native New York City. It is a decision we did not take lightly. We very much knew the importance of us having rights as a married couple. Many of our mentors told us their stories. They had gone through decades of being with their partners without being with the right of marriage, time and time again. Same-sex partners were separated from each other without a say about their loved ones' medical treatment or estate, if in case they passed away. This was especially true during the HIV and AIDS crises of the late 1980s and early 1990s. Can you imagine being with someone for years, a person whom you love very much, and then all of a sudden not have a say about anything whatsoever in regards to them? With the blink of an eye, you have lost where you live, you have no rights to the possessions both of you worked so hard for, and even furthermore, you are denied the right to see your partner one last time as they are buried at an undisclosed location. In many of those situations, the families did not approve of their loved ones' lifestyle choices, greatly affecting the other partner. So this brings me to the year 2022. Are we going to allow this injustice? I certainly hope not. I want to live in a Virginia in which I can have the right just like anybody else, regardless of my gender or sexual orientation, in where my marriage is fully recognized under the law and all my rights are completely upheld. I want the right to be with my husband and for us to be able to make decisions that work for our family. We are not asking for special treatment. We simply want what everyone else has: equal rights under the law. So I earnestly ask you today, please do not take away the rights of my husband and I, and support marriage equality for all of those who reside in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to the public hearing on the exchange of excess city property at 2395 North Landing Road to Princess Anne Village LLC, approximately 43,140 square feet of city-owned property.
We had one speaker signed up, Barbara Massner, but I do not see her in the audience.
Okay. In this case, we can go direct to the consent agenda? Okay.
And we'll do the add-on afterward.
Then we'll do the add-on afterward.
You have. But the under ordnance and resolutions, number one.
Hold on.
You're going to approve the item on the consent agenda, correct? So you need to add it first.
Okay.
All right, we're going to add this number eight, the declaration of a local emergency due to winter storm Keenan. Do you have a?
Do you need a motion?
Motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, vote's open for the add-on.
That will be number. By a vote of ten to zero, you have added this to the agenda. Okay, so under ordinance and resolutions, number one, ordinance to declare approximately 43,140 square feet of city property at 2393 North Landing Road in excess of the city's needs and authorize the city manager to execute all disposition and exchange documents with Princess Anne Village LLC and Kellum &amp; Eaton Incorporated regarding Foxfire Trail. Under number two, B, sections 1-3, 1-6, 1-12, 1-13, 1-14, 1-15, 1-21, 1-26, 1-28, and 1-30, city code appendix D regarding the Stormwater Appeals Board. And C, sections 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.8, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.8, 2.11, 3.1, 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.6, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 5.1, 6.1, and 6.3, city code floodplain ordinance appendix K regarding housekeeping, the deletion of public works requirements, and the addition of a coastal A-zone and a coastal high hazard zone. Number three, ordinance to confirm the declaration of a local emergency regarding winter storm Jasper. Number four, resolution to declare 1049 and 1053 Virginia Beach Boulevard to be a revitalization area regarding qualifying for Virginia housing financing. Number five, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments in two portions of the city's right-of-way, known as 36th Street and Atlantic Avenue, commonly referred to as the City Green Belt. Adjacent to 3601 Atlantic Avenue by the Belvedere Hotel Investments Associates LLC, Ray install and maintain a seat wall landscaping, storm drain, concrete flume, and irrigation system, District 6 Beach. Six, we have a speaker. Seven, and Mr. Moss will be voting no on this, ordinance to authorize longevity and college incentives for the sworn employees of the Fire Department Emergency Medical Services as well as employees in the Emergency Communications Division of Emergency Communications and Citizen Services, and transfer $1,216,553 from vacancy savings within the general fund to the FY 2021-22 Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Division of Emergence Communications and Citizen Services operating budgets. Number eight is the declaration of a local emergency due to winter storm Keenan. Public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing I'm planning.
And there isn't anything, sorry.
Nope.
That's it.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, they're not, okay, any discussion, then the vote is open.
We don't have a second.
Okay. Uh, sorry.
Mr. Holcomb, may I have your vote?
Yes, Mr. Boss.
I'm sorry, by a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson noting Mr. Moss's nay vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think I'm a few minutes late, however. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at your place setting, there were new versions of the Stormwater and the floodplain ordinances. They are simply periods, changing numbers that had been transposed, that kind of thing. There's the floodplain ordinance, it is line 881. That's a paragraph. We changed the paragraph to make it more readable. The Stormwater are just a few.
Well, I do believe to make those corrections, the minutes have, the vote would have to be amended or redone and look to the attorney because we have to cite this document.
They amended.
Whether or not the House is comfortable with what you just put forward.
No.
I agree, it should have been described before the vote.
Yes.
So how do we fix it?
All right.
You'll have to have a substitute motion to approve those items as amended at your place.
Okay, and we do that, you know, with the normal.
I'm sorry, I need to know which numbers on the agenda, K.
B and C.
Well.
Underordnance, they're right here.
There they are. I understand that's where they are, massing the numbers. J, two, B and C.
Is this a wholesale replacement? Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can we identify this document and put an exhibit on it and say Exhibit A so the emotion knows exactly what document we adopted?
It is under two if we make the one for Stormwater, two B. You want to do that?
We will make it as amended and put an Exhibit A on it.
Yeah, I think Exhibit A is best, which is distinctly and legally identifiable.
Yep, good point, John.
So is one under B and one's under C? Is that right?
It would be B and C, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Exhibit A for each one. Under consent, we amend two B, Exhibit A, and two C, Exhibit A.
Okay, we need a second on that?
Not two A. Two A has been pulled.
All right, two B.
Two B and C.
I mean, sorry, two B and two C, excuse me. And they're both under Exhibit A.
Okay.
They both will be identified as amended as Exhibit A.
Okay. Any other questions?
If we get a second?
Okay, we got the second, we're open.
Mr. Tower, did you make the original motion?
I think so.
I think so, too. Mr. Branch?
Do you need this?
I have one, thank you.
Okay.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved as amended.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me for my.
Yes, sir, Mr. Rouse.
I go after Councilman Ross, I yield the hand.
Well, thank you, Councilman Ross. I just wanted to explain my no vote on item J seven. It's the same no vote I registered with the sheriff proposal on January 18th to do incentive payments and longevity payments for EMS and fire. We are in pot, we are within weeks of receiving, if not days of receiving, our total compensation package. It appears to me that we should have looked at these issues and what needs to be corrected after we comprehensively understood what the delta we were trying to fill in terms of being competitive. Secondly, you get the educational benefit independent of what the education is. I'm concerned of the message to other people who have degrees that they're required to have in their position are getting no educational incentive. I don't know what we're telling the rest of the workforce who goes out and get degrees and equally, whether it's psychologists, social workers, or whatever, they're not getting educational incentive pay. I don't envy the city manager having to explain that. I think we would have been much better positioned to have deferred these. It wasn't two months to, you know, we'll be talking about that total compensation package. More importantly, if this is what we believe we need to do in terms of monetary for retention, then we should just increase the salary and move on and stop these gimmicks to try to make, we don't have to deal with our whole population, but instead we seem like those that are better organized get differential treatment and we're not sending a consistent message across the workforce when we make the city manager's life more difficult. More importantly, I'd rather be paying bonuses to buy service going forward than recognizing past service because we have a retention problem. So if we're going to have a program trying to solve our retention, we might want to look at the military and have retention pay rather than longevity pay. So I don't think we've really given this the look, but more importantly, we just didn't take the time and the pause to look at what the total compensation package does, and what if it comes out and tells us something differently? This reminds me when I was at Green Run High School and I spoke against the B, the business and tool tax. Council passed it within three weeks after hearing from Steel. We reversed ourselves, finding out that they paid over 50% of the whole tax in the city. Once again, we are acting before we know what the landscape is. This is not good governance. This is not good financial stewardship. I understand the dynamics and the players, but we paid and invested good money, and this is not and can't be explained to the larger workforce, why are they different? Because there's no analytical foundation behind this. There's no empirical analysis that says it will buy the outcome that we hope, and I am very disappointed this is the path that we have taken.
Okay, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking of the large workforce, I just want to make my intentions known, while I'm proud to support our fire, EMS, employees in Emergency Communications Division of Emergency Communications and Citizen Services, I'm also looking forward to the market salary survey to come back so we can support those in public works who we heard from last week and all the difficulties that they are having because of low pay. I'm also looking forward to support those in public utilities, parks and recs, human services, the rest of our city staff who also help to keep our city going. And so, again, while I'm proud to support our first responders, also want to make sure we're going to support our city staff, and that's something that I, throughout this budget cycle, I'm going to be intent on and hoping to have support so we can make sure our staff is well-paid. Thank you.
Yeah, I concur with your reasoning, Mr. Rouse, and hopefully we're going to be really moving forward in the same direction. Okay, Ms. Emily.
Well, I think we can make a very important distinction with these employees that we are.
Ms., you're out of order. Thank you.
I'm aware, I'm letting you know I'm here because you're not calling me and you're letting.
Yeah, the consent agenda was already read.
I'm aware, I was trying to watch you at the. It's impossible to watch those. I appreciate the consideration.
Okay, please.
Another barber was talking. I think there's a very distinct difference between the employees that we are addressing here and the rest of the workforce, and that is because these particular departments have got extreme, an extreme number of vacancies. They must be filled 24/7. It's causing a great hardship, but more than that, it takes a long time to train the new people to fill these positions, and we just can't wait until July 1st for this to be addressed. And I think there is a very distinct difference. It doesn't mean we're not concerned with the other employees, we certainly are, and we will be addressing that very soon with the budget. But I guess we have this question that we keep asking, when is the market survey going to come out? And I ask again, with part of our, whether it was CARES or ARPRO, whatever, money, we did give a big chunk of money to the workforce council to look at the vacancies and what we need to do to address it, and I think their final report was supposed to have been out mid-December, and that was supposed to be able to tell us what the things are that we need to address. So two things, when is our market survey going to be available to us, and when are we going to be able to see this workforce council data?
Councilmember Henley, we reached, starting with the workforce council survey, so that survey was specifically for the hospitality industry and only for the hospitality industry only. We reached out to them and they should be getting something prepared for us for, tailored to this Friday package, for us to present to you all. So we should be able to get that information for you there. The market salary survey, we plan to brief council through into retreat, specifically on what those are.
Now that the retreat is not going to be until later, we're still, anyway, we've been waiting a long time for that, and I hope we can get it soon. But I thought that we also addressed mental health with some of the market workforce issues, too. So I was hoping that that was going to be broader than just the tourism industry, but we'll just be grateful for whatever we get and I'd like to see their data.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make no, not being deferential to comments of my fellow council member, but just speaking historically about the men and women in public works, they have been historically underpaid and undervalued, even from their perception from the city. So I think it's important, and I think I would like to, it should be vital, that we find a way to increase their salaries, to find the benefits that they need to be able to do their work and take care of their families as well, but not to mention, we have vacancies throughout our city, not just in public works, but public utilities, parks and recs. You know, we talk about the manpower that we don't have because of people are leaving, retiring, and also trying to find a ways to attract and retain workers. So again, this, finding employers and workers, I should say, finding workers is a daunting task for anybody these days. We certainly have our work cut out for us, but historically, the men and women in public works have been, you know, working at, I would say, working hard on what they are valued at. And so, again, for our staff that works here, I think it's important that one of the first things we do is figure out how do we raise their salaries, how do we find their benefits, and how we continue to support them so they can support us, and that goes across the board. That's why I was happy to support our law enforcement officers, our fire department, our first responders. Again, this is a team effort. We can't have one part of our team sitting so high and the other part of our team, you know, asking for more resources, you know? We have to make sure we have this certain level of equality and equity throughout our city staff. And so, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for your support in making sure we can support
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that that's going to be a major priority for us going forward. Okay, Ms. Wilson?
I certainly agree with a lot of Mr. Rouse had to say, and even though I missed that evening that so many people from public works and utilities came forward, I, I watched everything, and, and these are very valued employees that make us look good. They have difficult jobs and the citizens, and we really need them. And so, this market survey is going to be really important, and we did a lot for public safety last year with the budget, and so I'm hoping that this year we're going to be able to really look hard at really doing a lot more for the other segments of our employees. That's, I, I agree with you, I think that's something we're really going to need to do because we need them, it's probably more than they need us. So it's very, it's going to be very, very important, and, and I think schools are kind of doing the same thing because we are in a labor crisis. So I'm sure Mr. Duhany is going to do his very best to bring us forth a really good budget, which is his budget, but then we will take that budget and we'll work on it, and then it becomes our budget.
I'm glad that my explanation drove such a robust discussion because I have brought out that if you go back and remember in the budget, I think the reserve, and Mr. Duhany will correct me correctly, to implement the compensation, it was three million dollars, or it was five, but there was a reserve that we set aside in that amount, and when you look at the percentages that we may or may not see against the six-hundred-million-dollar labor expense roughly in our budget, ten percent sixty million, five percent thirty million, our reserve, and that's why I have consistently said, as we continue to spend our cash surpluses from overperformance from last year, we are doing that without due consideration to the liabilities that we all want to liquidate going forward. We're going to get there and find out that we spent all the money before we got to the train station, and then you're going to tell me we have to raise taxes to take care of our employees. This is not how good businesses operate their business. We are not conserving our cash and our recurring revenues until we know all the bills. So I just want to be saying that again because I'm sure we're going to arrive at the train station and we are going to have to make difficult choices that we wouldn't have to have made if we took a more comprehensive look and kept more of our gunpowder before we knew all the guns we had to load. So that's my closing remarks there. I hope that doesn't come to fruition, but that appears to be the path we are on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, let's move on to resolution ordinances two B. Now I get to read the numbers.
Two A.
Two A. Oh, that's right, we do have the two A. Excuse me. Chapter eight, Stormwater Management of Public Works Design Standards Manual, ready bringing into compliance.
The first speaker is Brad Martin. After Mr. Martin is Barbara Messner.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Brad Martin, and I've lived in Bay Lake Pines Offshore Drive for over twenty years. I don't think you're going to hear anybody from the development community tonight speak against the basic tenants of the stormwater regulations. One and a half feet of sea level rise and twenty percent heavier rainfalls are rational protections that we're on board with. I'm personally stunned that your city engineers have proposed tonight the abandonment of some sea level rise protections after not even two years of enforcement. I think you understand the fallacy of trying to solve yesterday's problems at Princess Anne Plaza, Windsor Woods, and Asheville Park by throttling down on tomorrow's Wawa or a Shadow Lawn duplex. There aren't enough tomorrow's Wawas to fix our prior problems, and I'm glad you all have shown the discernment recently to spend more of our stormwater fees on the maintenance and rehabilitation of our existing drainage infrastructure, which is sorely needed and will have consequential impacts. I hesitate to delve into the details of the proposed ordinance, but I want to briefly discuss what probably seems like a benign sentence on the first page. The ordinance states, quote, "Analysis of existing conditions shall be required to the same level of detail and extent as the proposed drainage system," unquote. It seems innocent, doesn't it? We are tasked to analyze the existing situation, compare it to the proposed, and the developed project must achieve a reduction in characteristics, flow rates, runoff volumes, and pollutants versus the existing. So we have to compare apples to apples, right? Let me tell you that we consultants have been bickering with your review staff for the past eighteen months, not just over the accuracy of the stormwater models, but also over minuscule issues like the quality of existing turf, the flow path of a raindrop from the backyard to the front yard, and a half-inch difference higher or lower between the neighbor's property and our own to determine the existing conditions. Sometimes we can't even get to the design of our project because we can't even agree on the starting line. With reasonable and acceptable methods to approximate runoff from previously developed properties, there's hardly a reason or any benefit to precisely dissecting the existing conditions to the same level of detail as our proposed project. I tell you that so you'll understand that there are seemingly innocent sentences throughout this document which can become absolute showstoppers under the rigorous enforcement of an overzealous review engineer who is under pressure to do anything and everything to fix flooding. The enforcement of these regulations, the combination of duplicative conservative methodologies, and the precision of zero-point-zero feet, which quite frankly isn't much better at zero-point-zero-five feet, has been the nightmare scenario that you've heard about for the last eighteen months. Thank you for your service to the city.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner, and after Ms. Messner is Claudia Cotton.
Good evening.
Fascinating when somebody starts their petitions to run for office, they suddenly come up to speak at council when, you know, these issues have been going on for a long time. And as far as due process, you know, the city manager, you know, there was no advertisement in the paper for this meeting, none. And you say that it's not your, your duty to advertise, but you advertise for planning and other things. Like I said, there's, there's a conflict with the people who will be benefiting from this, including people who will be selling real estate in these new places. And this affects, you know, you're talking about public works, you know, Ms., Ms. Wooton wants to have something for the, in February, for the new, for one new person that was killed last year. I'd appreciate it if you'd have something for a permanent memorial because I really appreciate the fact that you're taking action now, Mr. Rouse. And as far as the public workers, this is just one of the, of the palm trees that we replace every time there's a storm and every two years. Do you have any idea what this costs to come from Florida? And our public works people, our police, fire, and rescue? I, I listened to, your shiny new jewelry is really glaring. You know, I listened to y'all talk about caring about the, the employees. You don't care about the employees. And you talked about, you know, police being used for certain things and then they weren't available for something else. What about the polar plunge? What about everything else that you have where the police, fire, and rescue are pulled away from their areas? Y'all don't care about public safety, and I hope everyone will go back and listen to this workshop, and I'd like to know, besides the lobbyists, if we paid Mr. Berlucci to go up there and lobby for us. You know, there's a Hatch Act.
Please stick to the item at hand.
I am, I'm talking about due process and your duty to protect everyone, and you don't have the you-know-whats to say anything when Jafari Jones screams and threatens at you, but you scream at me.
Okay, Ms. Messner, you're out of order.
I know.
You're supposed to speak on the particular item, period.
Well.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Stiles has agreed that it's air, air three minutes by the Constitution, which other people have mentioned before.
Thank you.
Okay?
The next speaker is Claudia Cotton.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Duhany and staff. My name is Claudia Cotton, I represent the Coastal Virginia Building Industry Association. Pleased to see you tonight. As leaders of the development and engineering community in Virginia Beach, we really appreciated the opportunity to sit with staff and engage with our experiences with the new design manual over the last eighteen months, and I'd like to thank them and applaud your staff. They've done a tremendous job listening to our concerns and working on solutions. We support all the recommendations, both in A with the design manual and the other two that you've already passed. We do feel like it's been a good start and good conversation, but we truly do not think the work is done. We have more to do, and we understand that the Process Improvement Committee has been tasked with monitoring the process changes to see if these amendments will show some results, so we would like to see our group reconvene in about six months and assess where we are. We intend to stay engaged. We feel strongly about the enormous implications that these regulations have on future development, redevelopment, and affordable housing in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before she depart.
Yes.
I would just like, you know, Councilmember Jones and I met every Friday, I think, August through September and October, and what a great, it was a great, robust, honest interchange between the staff and industry, and I think even the council members as well, and I, and we did commit to continue this liaison group and to come back in six months and to continue to look, and I do appreciate, you know, we could have, we found our common ground, and I guess later tonight we'll talk about our non-common ground, but that's okay, it was all good, and I do appreciate the support of the industry, and I see Tuck's back there in the back as well. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you, Councilman Moss.
Thank you, Claudia.
Thanks, everyone.
We have one additional speaker, Mark Ricketts.
Oh, yeah, he was in the meetings.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you tonight?
Doing okay.
Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, my name's Mark Ricketts, I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Virginia Beach. I also happen to be a licensed professional engineer, licensed land surveyor, I work in the private sector. I've actually been a member of the Virginia Beach staff for thirteen years, so I've managed to see the, the regulations and the issues from both sides. In fact, I was part of a.
We're hiring, by the way.
Pardon, Matt?
Didn't mean to cut you off, so we're hiring, by the way.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. In fact, I was part of a fantastic group of people who actually started the Development Services Center when it started as a separate department, and then eventually became part of the planning department. So I've been proud to be a, a resident of the city of Virginia Beach and then also to participate as an engineer and land surveyor in the process in watching the city grow in my lifetime here. I too like Ms. Cotton, Tuck Bowie, Councilman Moss, Councilman Jones, the city manager was at a few of our meetings, served on this particular committee. So I, I'd like to bring to the table the fact that I do support as a, as an engineer, part of the development community, part of the engineering community, the fact that we continue these, this committee so that we can review these issues. I think the staff has done a fantastic job of pulling this information together. We did find common ground, as you talked about. There are still some things that need to be worked on. As with anything, particularly in engineering, you can find that there are those things that you can look at the same information and have a slightly different opinion, but I think it's, it's incumbent upon all of us to continue to work together to make these things work and to work well together. So I just wanted to take a moment, state that, and state that I support the, the committee, and I hope that we'll continue to move forward with this, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all the speakers.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move, it's adoption.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I could just say one more, is throughout all this process, we did not change the standard. I want the people that went out there and voted for the bond reform to know that the standard that we adopted in our regulations was not lowered. That's an important thing to get across.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance to establish a capital project.
Mayor, sorry, close the vote, Terry, please. Five vote of ten to zero, you've approved the resolution.
Oh, thank you.
The resolution, thank you.
I'm losing my voice quickly, so I'm trying to expedite, my apologies. Okay, item number six, ordinance to establish capital projects one dash oh-three-oh and one dash oh-three-one and appropriate fifty-four million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight twenty-two in fiscal year 2021, schools reversion and revenue sharing formula funds.
Mr. Mayor, before we start the speakers, I need to ask the city attorney a legal question.
Yes.
Do I need to make my statement now or at the time of the motion?
I would go ahead and make it now because the discussion will occur right after the speakers.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Dear fellow Virginia Beach residents, to my fellow residents and collective employer, this is the preface to a more detailed disclosure to follow that has been reviewed by the city attorney to ensure that it comports with the disclosures I have to make on the school board's reversion funding request resolution on the city council's agenda item next on the table for consideration. As late as last Wednesday afternoon, I received a call from Deputy City Attorney Mr. Ingram informing me that he was composing a disclosure letter for my execution to inform the public that my spouse is a teacher in the employ of the school board, and that being the case, I judge myself able to objectively assess the issue at hand, cast a vote, and act in the public interest as I have done many times. It was Mr. Ingram's call that first alerted me to the fact that this ordinance would be considered tonight. Therefore, I engaged in composing an analysis to educate the public and my colleagues on the merits of the school board's request. Yesterday afternoon at four forty PM, I was driving in my car, I was informed in a telephone call with the city attorney, Mr. Stiles and Mr. Ingram, that the legal understanding that was the foundation of Mr. Ingram's call last Wednesday and under which I had been working was based on a prior attorney general opinion that was likely supplanted by a more recent opinion of the Commonwealth attorney. As a result of that call, I immediately requested through the city attorney's office a written opinion from the Commonwealth attorney who was kind enough to provide the opinion on an expedited basis, which I will read shortly. The Commonwealth's attorney's opinion is that because the ordinance prints presently before the council relates exclusively to the school board, I must refrain from participation in discussion or the vote on this item because of my wife's employment by the school board. If this item dealt with broader budget, including other offices, departments, and priorities, which has been the case in the past, I would be able to participate and vote. The prior opinion of the attorney general did not specifically address this distinction. Needless to say, this news received just yesterday afternoon, Monday, January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, at four forty PM, on such extremely short notice in advance of today's meeting and providing no opportunity to revisit the Commonwealth attorney opinion with the attorney general in a timely fashion was disappointing. I know just a little bit now how the feeling of a commander on the eve of the battle being called home to deal with a personal illness whose treatment could not be delayed. I regret that my work on the people's behalf will not be entered into the record and the deliberations this evening. I will, however, be able to post the disposition of this, of this effort tonight to make my analysis available to the public, though I will be precluded now and in the future from engaging my council peers or city staff on this issue unless this issue ever comes before as an element of a larger issue such that it is not a singular school board issue for consideration. Post tonight's meeting, the draft such that it was developed as of four forty PM yesterday will be posted on social media and read publicly on public media for the public's education. The city attorney has orally advised me that the former action is not legally precluded. If my understanding of the city attorney's legal counsel is incorrect, I request that he revise me to that effect at the conclusion of my statement. Now I will read the actual opinion from the Commonwealth attorney, and I appreciate everyone's indulgence. Dear Councilman Moss, in an email from Deputy City Attorney Rod Mr. Ingram dated January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, an opinion was requested under the Conflict of Interest Law of Virginia regarding your participation in Virginia Beach City Council's discussion and voting in ordinance to establish the capital projects one zero-three-zero and one zero dash three-one and to appropriate fifty-four million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars in the FY schools reversion and revenue sharing fund, formula funds, here and after called capital projects ordinance. Specifically, given your spouse's employment by the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, you ask whether the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act prohibits. you ask whether the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act prohibits you from participating in this discussion and voting on this matter. According to your email, your spouse is employed by the Virginia Beach City Public Schools and earns more than $5,000 annually from this employment. Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112 prohibits any participation by a government officer in a transaction where the officer has a personal interest. A personal interest being defined inter alia as annual income that exceeds or may reasonably be anticipated to exceed $5,000 from salary, other compensation, friends' benefits that accrue to an officer, an employee, or to a member of his immediate family. Immediate family is defined to include inter alia a spouse, personal interest in the transaction, et cetera. I'm trying to cut some of that off, put it into the record, Mr. Mayor. I realize time is important. And this is the part that gets down to, I want to get just as many pages, but I'm trying to get to the essence because I talked a little bit about there. I'm aware of the opinion of the Attorney General dated September 18, 2020, and addressing the application of subsection 2.2-3112B1 to whether a school board member would be permitted to participate in a transaction which would apply to a large group of people, including the school board member's spouse. The attorney, this is the school board to school board, mind you. The Attorney General concluded under the application, since there were more than three people in the group that included the school board member's spouse, the school board member could participate so long as there was also a compliance with the requirements for disclosure, which I previously have done. The opinion did not address the application of Section 2.2-3112AI. As set forth, it states, employees having a personal interest in a transaction must disqualify themselves if the transaction has an application solely to a governmental interest in which they have a personal interest. This is the distinction between the previously described prohibition. It is based upon that section that the city Commonwealth attorney has concluded that I cannot vote this evening or participate in discussions. I am going to request a review and revisit this by the Attorney General, Jason Mieres, who I respect and thank that I have to abide by the opinion as given. But I do take great exception that that was the intent or the meaning. But I will be withdrawing until this matter is concluded, and I appreciate your indulgence. Both the letter and my statement will become part of the record, and I appreciate your time. And I appreciate the public's consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moss. Okay, now, do we have a motion?
We have speakers.
Okay, speakers.
Mrs. Marsh. And after Ms. Marsh is Melissa Lucson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson. On your ordinance here to appropriate $54,938,000 in reversion funds to the school district. I am opposed to this because, as Ben said earlier tonight, I think we're going to run out of money before we pay all the bills. And this has been happening every year since I've been speaking to you about the pension crisis that is a global pension crisis. And currently, from numbers that I can get through Truth and Accounting, even though I have asked for them from our own VB.gov, I feel that we are $1,533,000,000 in arrears on funding the pensions. So if I were working for this city, I would be very concerned. Is it going to become like Detroit, Mr. Dehaney? They never thought in 2013 that they would declare bankruptcy, but they did. And when they did, people who worked there, someone I know who worked in Detroit for 40 years, no longer has that pension. And we're many years out from that, eight years. So it's really important we look at this, especially when we note that it used to be a zero balance. It was a surplus until 2003. The hands, by council, only started going into the cookie jar in 2003. So in 20 years, we've gone up to $1.5 billion. If my numbers are off, give me more correct numbers, but that's a big number. And I stood here before you, Ms. Wilson, I remember you speaking up on this, and we had these charts that were going to pay down the amortization of this loan. It was going to pay it off in 25 years. Well, here we are, a few years into it, and I bet if these charts were updated, which I keep asking for, the numbers would be off the charts. So I'm asking you to defer this until we have a more complete look at all the bills. We don't know what all the bills are. And I've sent you all the Truth and Accounting Comprehensive Look at the City. I don't do this. They do it for 75 cities. And they tell us that we are in arrears, the $1.533 billion. So I'm really asking you to slow down this process, take a look at it, and know that the taxpayers are nervous about you having to raise taxes and reduce services. And if I were going to work here, I don't know if I would do it because I don't know if this pension or the benefits for retirees are going to be very good a few years down the road. So you might want to really take a look at funding this and not just giving more money back to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Lucason.
Well, she's coming up. Mr. Dehaney, a few years back, Patty Phillips did an analysis of everything and got it out to us. And I think it's been a while. You think we could get Kevin to do something for us?
I'll look into it with the finance director.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, sorry. I actually, this is, I was running late from traffic. Mr. Berluci, I hope you had support. I had a great speech written for that. But this is, this was the one that I was going to pull myself from because I thought we really had good support here.
Thank you.
So, school board, as far as, I am in support of you guys passing the school board. Ms. Marsh actually makes some good points on retirement funds. I'm just speaking as a citizen. I am in a group, you know, a local forum. And I wish I knew how great teachers were then, as I do now. I am in this group with a lot of Virginia Beach teachers, and I see a lot of frustration. And I see a lot of feeling like the city doesn't care about them. Okay, right now, we're obviously in a very big situation with there's some political stuff going on, and they're feeling that. And these are the people that show up every day to teach our children. I read through Ms. Pates, the CFO for VBCPS. I read through the letter, you know, countering why. I have some safety concerns. Listen, my kids went to Cox and First Colonial. You know, conditions of our schools, they're just not, they're not great, okay? And I think every one of us know this. A huge concern is safety. There's some safety issues that need to be taken care of. There, and not just, you know, with locks and doors, but flooring and things like this that need to get done. And there was a really valid point of them saying that there's a plan for maintenance of these schools, painting and doing all these things. If we do not get them these funds back, they're not going to be able to do these things, which then sets the course for getting behind on everything else. And I, you know, I understand the concern. I did read that some of the, I guess, the excess that the school board didn't expect to have was because of what revenue from the city, which is amazing. Like, that shows we're in great economic position. As a small business owner, I can tell you that our business is flourishing in the city, okay? This is a really great time in the city. It's not a great time for our schools. It's not a great time for our teachers. And I, I think they need your support on this. And I would just ask you guys to take care of it and approve this and send that money back to the schools so we can get some things done, okay? Thank you.
Thanks a bunch.
The last speaker is Barbara Messner. Ms. Messner?
Good evening. I appreciate Ms. Marsh coming back to speak. And, you know, the school reversion funds. This has been brought up many times, but nothing is ever done. And the school teachers, every time you raise the budget, as far back as 2012, the teachers come here, oh, oh, please help us. It's the students. It's the students. It's all employees that need help. And as far as the conflicts, I noticed Mr. Moss left. Colin Staley has admitted conflicts. And so does Mr. Moss on, you know, Lynetti. He's flip-flopped, I don't know how many times, since 2014. And it's a toxic work environment all over the city. And, you know, I watched, you call her Deb. You know, she works 24/7 as a paid lobbyist, 24/7. And she reports virtually. I can't even imagine what she's paid. And you're looking for money to help the employees? Please look at the salaries and the benefits. Yeah, Mr. Moss's conflicts with Owl's Creek, the arena, on and on. Since I miss being able to speak because I was trying to watch y'all. VB Strong for Centerra. You know, you're not, the toxic environment was shown even by Hillard Hines, who you paid, what, $600,000 to not find anything wrong? But these people are still fighting, and they deserve a permanent memorial. You've taken money and misused it that's supposed to go to these people. Christopher Rapp, Catherine Nixon, Alexander Gucev, Missy Langer, Mary Louise Gale, Robert Bobby Williams, Tara Welch Gallagher, Richard Nettleton, Joshua Hardy, Laquita Brown, Ryan Keith Cox, and Herbert Burt Snelling. And I am, do you want to sign up for open mic?
Yeah. Ms. Messner, we're going to make a correction of something you said. We have a committee right now looking to put together a group of people, including the victims, to plan for input. No money has been taken away from this initiative.
I'm talking about VB Strong, CARES Act, everything else, VB Wrong as a... Okay, but I'm well aware, I'm in touch with these people. I'm totally aware of what you do and what you pretend to be doing. I'm totally aware.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval, and then after a second, just make a quick comment.
Okay, any other comment?
Yeah, I just want to say that I agree that the schools, the staff, the children, this has been a really incredibly rough time for them. And this is a historical amount of money that we've never had before. And we asked for the schools to go back and to sort of rearrange how it was being spent to put it to use where we could get more built, and they did that. Eight million's going to Princeton High School, seven and a half million's going to Betty F. Williams, five million's going to Bayside High School. And the artificial turf that we've been hearing about, well, Mr. Rouse could probably speak to it much better than I can. But it saves money because of maintenance. But also, what hasn't been brought out is it also helps with injuries, where you get less sprains and things like that. So it'll, it'll help protect our athletes as well. So, you know, when you look at, it's being spread across two schools, too. So I think the school board had worked really hard. They know their priorities. They are a duly elected body. And it's very fortunate that that money is there for them to put to good use.
Yep, Ms. Rouse.
Thank you. I think we all understand how incredibly the amount of pressure our school boards, our teachers, our students, our educators, the type of pressure that they're under these days. So I think it's extremely important that this council, you know, we find a way to continue to support them going forward and supporting our schools and supporting our students. Here with me tonight, I have my intern, Ari, here from First Colonial, which is my alma mater. I know Councilman Branches and Berluci as well went to First Colonial from Legal Studies Academy.
Bayside.
And Bayside. But this is our future here. And so when we talk about investing in reversion funds back to our schools, I see that young man and many of the young men and women, him, her, they, I'll make sure I get all the acronyms there, they are our future. And so I'm proud to support this initiative as well. And again, like you said, this, even though this is historic, we also are living in historic times, been through a pandemic as well, asynchronous learning at home. We're asking our teachers to do so much. And we haven't even touched the mental health part of things that our kids are going through, just in with the pandemic. And so hopefully, with the reversion of these funds, will help in that initiative to build in better and brighter young men and women.
Thank you. Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of 9 to 0, showing Mr. Moss absent. However, we will put his conflict letters in the minutes. You have approved the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on to a planning item. Number one, resolution to adopt and amend the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan, 2016 Array Stormwater Impacts for Discretionary Land Use Applications, deferred from January 4.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner will be Tuck Bowie. Oh. Did I forget Mr. Moss?
Yes, I think.
Welcome back.
Good evening. Okay, which one, Amanda?
K1.
K1, planning? Resolution to adopt and amend Comp Plan 2016, Stormwater Impacts for Discretionary Land Use Application, deferred. Planning Commission denial. And I need to say, you know, the fact that y'all have interns, I think is totally inappropriate, that you have help. You don't have time to respond to us, none of you. You only respond to those who help keep you in office. Okay, so stormwater, I've already gone over the stormwater. And you spent $260,000 to advertise and spin, and you're spending $260,000 on the Holloway case? And you did change it instead of formally to actually who our reps are because there's an appeal. Okay, you know, air workers can't keep up. You're using them for the wrong things. And this is the debt bond. This is the first phase, first phase. $567 million, and some of it's a 95-year plan, and the desired cycle is 50 years. And you were talking about Mr. Tower. You're so worried about parking in the oceanfront. Oh, my gosh, you're so caring, except for your constituents who you never respond to. Anyway, I'm in opposition. You keep amending everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tuck Bowie.
Ms. Rouse.
Mayor, I want to clarify a question. Ms. Messner, how are you doing this evening? My high school intern, it's a part of their educational requirement that they get internships throughout the city. Trust me, I wish I can afford an intern, but I think our internship...
No, I didn't say that.
Well, I'm not paying them. But what I'm saying is, really, I'm proud to have this young man and give him a first look at how our city government, local government operates. And so, and I'm proud to have my alma mater. And so we can have this young man here get a insight into local government and fulfill his civic responsibilities. And hopefully, one day soon, he could be sitting up here on the... And hopefully, one day soon, he could be sitting up here on this council as well. Thank you.
Okay, I didn't mean to infer.
Thank you, Ms. Messner.
No, I have a right to respond. He's speaking to me.
The next speaker is Tuck Bowie. And after Mr. Bowie is Claudia Cotton.
There's a reason things are supposed to be.
Ms. Messner, you're out of order.
Mr. Bobby Dyer.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Bowie.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of City Council. My name is Tuck Bowie. I am a local builder and developer whose office is located in the city of Virginia Beach. I'm also a member, and I'm very fortunate to have been a member, of the stakeholders group who worked rigorously on looking at your stormwater regulations, who spent a lot of time meeting and working on these issues. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Councilman Moss and Jones, City Manager Duhany, members of your planning staff, your DSC, your Public Works Department, and your Stormwater Department for allowing the development community to have an opportunity to come to the table and sit down and have these discussions. I applaud council for approving the changes to the regulations. And my hope is, I'm also a member of the Process Improvement Steering Committee, and my hope is that council is going to allow that committee the opportunity to monitor these new regulations and report back to you to let you know whether or not they have made a difference. I've talked to your planning director, Bobby Dyer, and he's indicated that he has the metrics that we can measure those against. And it's my hopes that we'll be able to do that. Now, I'm going to ask you tonight to defer any action on this amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. And Councilman Moss and I have talked about this. My question to council is, what's your hurry? You've already got in place the process and the procedures that allow your staff to look at any discretionary rezoning that comes before Planning Commission and City Council to get a rigorous review. We've talked during these stakeholder meetings about a way that that process can be less onerous if you're willing to do a proffer. But more importantly than that, this comes before you tonight with a unanimous recommendation of denial from your Planning Commission. This council appoints that commission. The commission is responsible for reviewing and updating the Comprehensive Plan. Why not give them the opportunity as part of that process to take a look at this? And if there is concern about the optics of what the citizens voted on with your bond referendum, which I doubt, but if those optics are concerned, then council can direct the Planning Commission to look at that first before they do the rest of that. Again, I thank you for your time. I thank you for your service. And, Mr. Moss, I thank you for allowing the development community to have a seat at the table. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Claudia Cotton. After Ms. Cotton is Mark Ricketts.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, and I'm Vice Mayor, members of council. I would just echo what Mr. Bowie said. And I just want to be clear. This amendment and all the other things that we have done so far, it does not water down the standards. Nothing's going to be built that doesn't comply with the standards. And I would just encourage you to defer, as Mr. Bowie did. I believe it's a dangerous precedent to run through a comp plan amendment this quickly when you have a process in place. I think you're preparing soon to update your comp plan, and I think it would be reasonable to include discussion on this in that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Mark Ricketts.
Welcome back.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. And I come back before you as a Bayside High School graduate, actually, as a matter of fact. So thank you very much for having me. Again, I kind of want to echo the same thing. And again, I kind of set the stage for it a little bit when I was up here a few minutes ago about the fact that I was a member of the city staff for 13 years. As part of the planning department and watching that particular process play out, I found that the Planning Commission being an integral part of the Comprehensive Plan, any Comprehensive Plan amendments and those sorts of things, I think is very important to the process. They bring value to the process through the staff. They bring value to the process. And I would certainly recommend that this be included as part of the updating of the Comprehensive Plan. Again, that's on a five-year cycle. I believe that cycle is this year. If I'm off a year, I apologize, but I believe it is this year. So I think by using the opportunity to include the Planning Commission in it, remanding it back to the Planning Commission and letting them, this change work its way through the process, I think it would be better for everybody. It would be better for the process and the result that we would get from it. So again, I would suggest and recommend that it be deferred and remanded back to the Planning Commission.
Oh, thank you. And being from Irvington, New Jersey.
Yes, sir.
High school, not mom left out of the loop tonight.
Well, welcome. We're glad that you're here. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
All righty, do we have a motion, Ms. Wilson?
I've been sitting on this body for a long time. And I don't think we've, in my memory, and maybe I'm wrong, that we've ever passed something that the Comprehensive Plan, that the Planning Commission had unanimously voted to deny. And that really bothers me. Some kind of thinking that, I think it might be a good idea if we could send it back to planning and let them work with the stakeholders and the community and so that they can come back with something that they feel comfortable with. Because they are our advisors in all of this. We appointed them and we asked them to give us advice in what we do with planning. So I'd like to make a motion that we send this back to the planning to let them work with the stakeholders and come back with a recommendation.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a discussion and a substitute motion that would be approved. I appreciate that the Planning Commission did advise us. I'd more greatly appreciate that 72% of the public, based on a commitment that this council made, that this council unanimously, save Mr. Branch, voted for to direct to make this change to a planning document guidance. It's not regulatory. So here we went out and asked the public, who we work for, and they gave us some advice. They said, "We took your resolution for granted," which we've implemented all those pieces, save this piece. "We trusted you that you would keep your commitment. You made a commitment. You voted for a commitment." And now, that 72% of the public's voice, which is more than anyone on here got votes for, is not as important as 11 Planning Commission members. Because they say, "Well, whose city is it? The public city or the Planning Commission city? Are we worth our word or not?" I'm not willing to go out, and some of you aren't for life, and tell people that "I told you and I voted for this, and we would do it by this date," which we've already deferred several times. This is not a big statement when you look at what it says. It's a planning document. And that's what the planning, that's what the comp plan is. But if you are happy with telling 72% of the people they got it wrong and telling them, "Oh, you probably didn't really rely upon that resolution anyway." I don't know if they did or didn't. But I know I made the commitment to do it. And I didn't make that contention upon making 11 members of the Planning Commission happy or being felt left out. And I went out, as many as you did as well, on the road, touting that resolution and what it told the people and why they should be comfortable with the fact that they could trust us to vote to borrow that money. Because our always concern is what? That we're not going to follow through. We're not going to maintain the zoning. We're not going to do these things. And they're going to spend a lot of money, and they're not going to get the benefit delivered. I have a difficulty not keeping my word. Now, someone wants to come up here and have a new resolution, amend that resolution, and say, "We really didn't mean what we said. We want to change our mind. We want to change our commitment of what we told the people." Great, I'm not voting for that. But I'm making a substitution, that it be approved because that's the commitment this body made to the public on September 7, 2021. And on Election Day, 72.4% of the public voted yes. So why are we not listening to the voice of the people who put us here?
Hey, we have a substitute motion. Do we have a second?
Second. And I want to comment on why. Because I did carry that resolution around with me and talk to the people about it. And this was one of the, this was one of the important elements of it. And I know that we deferred that resolution at least once. I'm pretty sure we did because we wanted to get the wording right. And I know that there was some angst that had been expressed by the development community about the wording. But we approved it anyway. And I think what we said was that, I think you're taking this literally, that it means we're not going to have any more development, and that's not what we mean. I think we have the opportunity to show what we really mean. Maybe it's unfortunate that we applied it to the Comprehensive Plan, but we did it. And then we did carry the, I carried that resolution around with me when I spoke to groups and I read every part of it, and this was one of them. And I'm kind of reluctant. I think the message we might be sending to our public is that we didn't know what we were doing, maybe. And we might use loopholes throughout the referendum process. And I've got to stick with my first vote.
Okay, anybody else? If I can say this, you know, I appreciate the comments and, you know, feelings of my two colleagues that left over there. The duty and responsibility of government is to make sure we get it right as we can. Ever since I've been on council since 2004, we've always been trying to find that delicate balance between the development community and other things. We have had process problems in the city for years. We have had problems with permits and inspection for years. We just recently had, and, you know, even Mr. Moss admitted, some great dialogue about coming together, where we had a blend of government with the development community, with discussions that were fruitful. Before items get to us, they go to Planning Commission. It, to me, is just more prudent and practical that they are involved in the decision loop and get the same buy-in and understanding of what we're trying to do. So as we go through, and, you know, Tuck mentioned the process improvement. By delaying, we're not saying we're going to throw this out. We're saying we're going to delay it to get it right so we can have that win-win for both sides. So with that, you know, I'm going to be voting against the substitute and for the original. Votes open. We're voting on the substitute.
By a vote of five to five, motion fails.
Okay.
Well, the other motion might fail, too.
All right.
So now you need to vote on the.
Now we'll vote on the original motion.
Give us one second, we're opening the vote.
Okay, votes open. To defer. This is a motion to defer.
No, this is a motion to refer it back to the Planning Commission.
By a vote of six to four, this item has been referred back to Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Now, at this point, we have appointments.
To the Arts and Humanities Commission, Alicia Phillips. Bayfront Advisor Commission, Whitney Graham. Bike Ways and Trails Advisor Committee. Dee Oliver.
Excuse me, I need a point of clarification. We deferred that. That was a vote to defer, correct?
Refer it back to Planning Commission.
Refer, yeah, refer back to Planning Commission. I'd like to change my vote if I can, or can we re-vote? Because I thought, I thought it was deferred to, I thought it was to defer to January 4. I mean, I thought we was going to defer it again.
I think you have to do reconsideration and we can vote for it on February 1. You're on the prevailing side.
I thought we were going to, I thought it was defer. I didn't know it was deferred to Planning Commission. I just thought it was deferred again.
My understanding is that a member on the prevailing side can make a motion to reconsider. Because you're still here on the same night of the public hearing, you can have that vote now. And if the motion to reconsider carries, then you vote again on the original motion.
So for future classification and process, can we just be clear on what? Because maybe it's just me, I just, I thought it was just deferred. I didn't know it was deferred back to planning. I just thought we were voting to defer it.
Well, Bobby said, I said, no, it's to be going to Planning Commission.
Yeah, so I'll make a vote for reconsideration.
I'll second that. Probably won't pass, but.
Okay. You know, at this point, you know, to respect Mr. Rouse, we won't, you know, make a go-ahead and, you know, you have a motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we have a sec, we need a second on that?
You got a second.
I second.
Thank you. The vote's open.
So this is a vote to.
Reconsider the prior vote, which would reopen the issue, and then you'd have a new motion.
Correct.
It gives you a chance to change your vote.
Okay.
Motion to reconsider.
And I apologize to council, I.
Is passed eight to two.
Okay, now.
Now you need a new motion.
Now we need a new motion.
Yes.
The motion is to send this item back to the Planning Commission.
Second.
One second, we need to open the vote.
Okay.
We're running out of votes, but you're good. So this is a motion to send it back to Planning Commission. Terry, we close it? By a vote of five to five, that motion has failed.
Okay.
We have nothing.
That's right.
It's okay.
Well, I think we'll get back to the drawing board.
It'll be on the agenda for Lewis to be the deciding person.
Yeah, let's put the pressure on him.
Well, you don't have, you haven't done anything with the item yet, so.
No, we have nothing. Okay. Get back to appointments.
Yeah.
If there's no motion to approve and no motion to defer, then I think it fails. I think that's the result.
It failed, there's nothing.
Now, could we bring this, no, Mark, could we bring this back in another format next voting meeting?
Well, I would think that would be a motion to defer.
Yeah.
It's February 14.
That would be February 15, right?
Mr. Mayor, can I make that motion to defer?
Yes, do we have a second?
Can we have discussion?
Discussion.
My question, I just have, I guess, a parliamentary type of question. If we didn't do anything, if it's failed, then couldn't someone just bring it back on the agenda at another time?
Well, it's a planning item, so I believe it would have to.
Be re-advertised.
Well, how long does it have to sit, Bobby?
It's not a land use application per se, so I think council could bring it back.
You'd just have to go back to the whole process.
Correct.
The whole process, you mean back to planning?
Yeah. See, that's why we're in a big circle here.
So maybe that's what we want.
So we have a motion to defer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Do we have a date certain on that?
February 15. The next formal session.
14. If it does nothing, it goes back to planning.
Today's the first, plus seven is eight.
Okay. Okay, do we agree on the 15th?
So.
Yes.
So that'll take it back to the Planning Commission.
No.
No. This would, this would allow, your motion would simply have you doing the same thing over again in two weeks.
So, Rocky, if we do nothing, it goes back to planning.
Okay.
Huh? That's what he said.
Well, somebody would have to.
You said it would start the process again.
Well, but somebody would have to do something to initiate that process. Usually, to get an item referred to the Planning Commission, you have an item that refers something to the Planning Commission. It then goes to them, they have their hearings. And then they make their recommendation, and then it comes back to you. So that wouldn't happen automatically. It would just, it would just not have passed tonight. So it would, this particular item would just be ended. And somebody would have to then bring it forward with a referral ordinance to start it again.
Could it be included when we do the comprehensive?
Could it be included when we do the comprehensive plan this year?
It could be included, uh, certainly, it could be included in the discussion of the comprehensive, the, the broader discussion of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, so basically, if, um, it really comes down to this, we have a motion on the table to, uh, defer. But if we stick with the, you know, the original vote where, uh, both ones were, um, both a positive and negative vote were a tie, we would refer back and start the process again. And, uh, yeah, and the clock again.
It's just, it's just over unless someone brings it up again.
Right.
Right. Okay.
It's just confidence.
But we will bring it back, we will.
Yeah, we, we would bring it back, I think that would be the thing. And certainly give us, I, I feel the time that we need. To, you know.
See what happens.
Okay.
So the motion is to defer till February 15th?
Uh, we did, do, we have a second on that?
I did.
Okay.
February 15th.
This is for it to come back to this body on February 15th.
Correct.
Okay.
By a vote of eight to two, you have deferred this item to come back till February 15th.
Okay, took a while to get there, but tell you what, we're going to, yeah, but like I said, I think the important thing is that we get this right. You know, as we are looking to a future of running out of land and development, infill development, all the other things, you know, we got to make sure that, you know, we have a harmonious relationship. Uh, you know, one of the biggest problems that we have with affordable housing right now is the cost of building and the cost of land. So, but once again, you know, let's get the yes on this. I think that's got to be the, uh, ultimate goal, okay?
Can I continue? Or do I have to start over on the appointments?
Yeah, we're going to start over on appointments.
I think you should start over, just so that the record is clear if you don't.
Okay, Arts and Humanities Commission, Alicia Phillips. Bayfront Advisory Commission, Whitney Graham. Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee, Dee Oliver. The COG Review and Allocation Committee, Dean Denzmore. Historical Review Board, Hayden Dubay. Housing Advisory Board, Phil Zarnak.
Kath Mirak.
Kath, Kath Mirak. Military Economic Development Advisory Committee, Gregory Mazzal. Oceanan Land Use Conformity Committee, John Roush. Lynnwood Branch Liaison to the Open Space Advisory Committee. Bill Brown to the ITA Citizens Advisory Committee. Social Services Advisory Board, John Moxon. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Vote's open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have appointed those names as spread by Vice Mayor.
Okay, any unfinished business? Any new business?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, five may, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Today, uh, today, I'm saddened to say that, uh, as a, as a deputy sheriff and a, and law enforcement officer for thirty years, it's a terrible day when we get the emails saying we have to drape our badges for any reason. And today, we had a, uh, disaster at Bridgewater, Bridgewater College, where two public safety officials lost their lives. And then here at home, we lost, uh, uh, a, a very good public servant, a true hero, in Master Police Officer Dave Nieves. He, he passed away today while surrounded by his family. He's a twenty-six-year veteran of the Virginia Beach Police Department. Uh, I've served with him, I've worked with him on different committees. And he is, uh, there will certainly be a hole in, in the Virginia Beach Police Department without him here today. And, uh, I see the officers in the back of the room nodding, and anybody's that he's worked with or that's, he's communicated with, he touched their lives and he made a difference. And if we had more Master Police Officer Dave Nieves in the profession of law enforcement, I promise you, it'd be a much, much better place. So, we grieve with him and the family, and, uh, and may they, may he rest in peace and take over from now on, we will serve, you have served us well, and we will take it from here, Master Police Officer Dave Nieves. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You know, Rocky, thanks for, you know, that, that awareness, but let me just say, you know, it, it takes a lot to be, to come to safe city we, we are. And we are so grateful to our public safety folks that, you know, they give, and, you know, it's a high-stress job, too. You know, let's not kid ourselves, but, you know, Rocky, thank you very much.
One, one more thing.
Yeah.
And then February is Black History Month. And, uh, Mr. Manager, if you please let us know, maybe in our Friday packet, the things that the city's going to do to help celebrate that, we'd really appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, good, and now, um, we have a group, uh, of, of really talented people that are going to be putting on a play at Desider Theater sometime soon. And, um, it, and it's a really highlight, uh, and start launching a, a, Mr. Belucci was at, uh, the meeting with me. And to really launch an initiative of mental health awareness and, you know, working on the problem. Thank you, though. Okay, we are adjourned, uh, re, uh, adjourned, and we're going into open mic.